First of all, first of all, I want to say good morning for showing up. Appreciate it, you know, today was uh. We're hoping today would be the um. The day we can approve our compact with the state of Minnesota on our cannabis, but. It's a might, we had to wait another week, so hopefully next week we'll have a meeting to uh. Sign with the governor. Who uh. Have our agreement, so. But with that said, you know, make which again, and you know, I'm glad everyone showed up today and. You know that uh. Pass the same out to Jeff and to Merlin to say a prayer to open it up in a good way. That we can, you know. A good day, good weekend, be which Merlin.
Thank you much. I'll walk in here. So come on, I can hear you should be making here. This is down here. Get away, just you get in, go about my gun and cock, okay, okay, my box here. And now we're down here, here. And me, me, got your money, too. My god, it's. And many a key card on them. Down, down, same, ah, be. So down there, you know, down, down, same. He come, mate, he say, ah, this is down here. Just you get in here. My. Down, it's at the end, we can see. Okay, yeah, good, get it, I should, I should play, Ben, you go. It's okay. I showing them all my deals up. Uh, was he? Just you get, I know, you, which.
No. Merlin, thank you. Okay, with that said, we'll call me in order at ten oh three AM. Michael, do you want to uh?
Roll call, please. District one, here.
District two, here.
District three.
Here.
I'm here, chairman.
Second, we'll get her, which next up is a review and approve the agenda. To ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a discussion to the agenda under new business. Uh, while we go on board meeting that met this week, uh, I arrived to observe and they adjourned the meeting instead of going to the observe. And I also wanted to add. A discussion on the South Twin, uh, South Twin Cabin at a, at that Monoman County Deputy was in. A lot of people are asking why he wasn't, why he wasn't being charged and what's going on at that property if it's going to be conveyed to one of our tribal members.
Full motion to add, but Eugene. I know that with the South Twin, I think Andrea did send a letter to you.
Did she send a letter to?
All of us. Sent the letter to all of us.
Okay.
This one you talking about? On the. I know, but that doesn't, that doesn't address the. Cabin stuff. In my district and you know, people want to know what's going to go on with it, so.
I think when, when we, when we discussed about that cabin, you just think that the thing that we. We did is we put the ball in your court to have a solution for it. What you wanted to do is if you're going to do a lottery, if you wanted to do this or do that, and. I think that would be the recommendation that we would take from you if you'd.
Okay, so I can do whatever else is there?
Well, I would, I would suggest something to write into the council. You know, on what you would like to do with it, and I know we talked to land department on, on what we've been doing with, with lands. That's been conveyed back to us and how we. Tell to our members if it's a lottery or if it's a bidding process, and I think those are the recommendations, I feel like that you should. Add us on how you want to, how you want to deal with that cabin.
Okay, well, I did say I wanted to do the lottery, like if everybody showed up to a meeting and we all put our names in a hat and we do a lottery like that. Um, I know there is some tense issues saying that if, if we were to convey it, then they would have to pay some kind of tax and. I, I wanted a solution to get around that because I don't think we should be paying tax on our own land.
We get us an email and huge.
Sure. Well, you guys already know about it, though.
And I think something that it starts that paper to go, so.
Yeah, okay. Alright, motion to approve. Well, the, the lobby gone board meeting too, I want to know why they, they told me I couldn't be there. Because they said, first they said it was a legal council, then I asked Mitch, Mitch, I was like, well, it was just an eight hour meeting with you negotiate, with negotiations, and I can't be in this meeting. So then he said the tribal council, uh, they, they should have adjourned the meeting and I couldn't be there. But I want to know why that is because that was in my district and there's been a lot of stuff coming on, uh, coming out about Wabi Guan and I just wanted to sit and observe.
Tribal leaders were in the other meetings, I was in a different meeting.
I know, I was in both meetings, I was in that other meeting with you guys and then I was on, you know, lobby one meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. But they said that you guys said that I had to get out of there, you guys told them to end the meeting.
I didn't say anything like that, so I'm not going to sit here and do he said, she said, when I didn't say anything like that.
Alright, well then, if you guys didn't have a corn, then they should never kick me out, so then. Do about it, man.
That's a different discussion, chairman. The agenda, heard what are, there's rules to special meetings.
Alright, motion to approve agenda as is.
Uh, Ben, yes. Uh. Bottom motion to, uh, let's see, here. Motion, motion to add a resolution and letter. That, uh, legal had on the, on the cannabis compact documents, uh, the pre, the pre thing, there's a pre, pre packet, pre documents for it. I would like to add that to executive session.
Like, what do you mean?
The pre, the pre documents for the compact, for the operation compact. I want to add that to. A resolution to executive session.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
So, um, general council sent over. Documents that would support the cannabis compact that needs to be in place prior to the submission of the actual compact.
Yeah, but we have to have a special medium anyway. Or we even sign.
This is getting prepared for a chairman.
Okay, should have been on the agenda.
Higher.
Yeah, it should have been on the agenda.
Yeah.
Alright, motion to approve the agenda.
Hello, chairman. I want to add something else, I want to add discussion because, I know, while we go on and the enterprises are supposed to make their payment this month, and then at the last meeting, they said that. Someone, uh. Someone like gave him the go ahead to skip the April payment and they said that was Secretary La Rock. Got it in the meeting minutes and then, yeah, so I, I want to know about that, who approved them to not pay us this month?
Meeting us Bobby gun next week, from my understanding.
Chairman, you want me to answer that?
If you want to.
Yeah, I never made that, I never, I don't have the power to do that. I don't have the power as the secretary treasurer to do that, that's a council decision. And I haven't got a chance to look at the meeting minutes over at Wabi gone, but. Uh, we had a discussion about the delay of the payment, but we never. We never, I, I never gave them permission to do that. Ever did.
Well, Zach said that you did.
Well.
Show me the meeting minutes, I said that you did.
Hope I didn't.
Okay, so motion to approve the agenda.
Can I request one of you guys to put the finances for, uh. Was Kiki Wabi Guam on the agenda? Uh, you know, it's been since the last quarterly meeting. Band members have been respectfully. Requesting that from the council. And have not go, have not gotten any, uh, financial update.
We are setting a meeting next week to meet with Bobby gun at the last RBC meeting, I requested to meet with Bobby gun as owners and that's going to happen.
Sure.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve it as is.
As is. Motion by Mike La Rock, all in favor?
Bye.
Oh. Eugene, no. Alright. Next up is, we have no meeting minutes, calendar review, old business, letter of concern.
And I can bad members get the letter of concern. Anybody else need one? I remember, can somebody get some copies for us? Members can get one. Uh, you need one over here. Leonard wants one.
Everyone's talking about the letter of concern off the memo.
Oh.
That's a turning corner then.
Oh, I miss you then, okay.
Almost got it. Andy. Hey, we need copies.
Yeah, if we can make copies of this. Are you sure, somebody?
Get copies.
Yeah, we'll go more than it.
You're gonna get copies?
Okay.
Thank you, man.
You're welcome.
Alright, you, I mean, we're talking with the letter concern, what do we? What are we discussing? I mean, what, who's going to bring?
Ashley is prepared to.
Present that, okay. Ashley.
I'm, I'm happy to present on, on the topic, um, with respect to the memo that I did, however, I would note. That some of the memo contents do have person specific enrollment information that should not be released to the public without those individuals' permission.
Can you, uh? Can you just use initials or something identifying, I don't know?
And I, I guess I'm not sure what area of the letter of concern you want to address, but I can certainly, um, refer to them in a, a general way.
Good.
You have any specific order you want going?
Oh, I don't know, I thought. I don't know, I sent you guys a letter, I thought you guys were going to respond now, so I don't know.
Sure, so, um, just generally, um. I received copies of, uh, the letters of concern that were prepared by Representative Summers. Um, I had an opportunity to synthesize what. I viewed as the issues raised, I identified seven of them. Uh, they included number one, um. And a desire to review the numbers of voters who are less than a quarter to see if they have actual influence on the outcome of elections. Number two, to address any discrepancies in the corrections made for blood quantum. And to put in quality assurance protocols to protect the process. Issue three, to identify lease transfers when fraud would, fraud was discovered in South Twin Lake. Is this, and a question, is this indicative of additional fraud? And fraud is in, in quotation marks because that is a, a legal standard that would have to be, um, presented in a quarter of law, but that was how it was phrased. Uh, number four, again, um, in quotation marks fraudulent tribal IDs being issued. Number five, didn't a non-enrolled member receive thirty thousand dollars in tribal funds? Issue number six, uh, a desire to see the number of individuals enrolled after the nineteen sixty-one annuity rule. And a list of people who have been disenrolled along with why? And, uh, issue number seven, uh, how did the E period B period situation come to be? So those were the, the seven issues that I was able to identify. In the letters of concern, uh, raised by, by representative, representative Summers. I'm happy to answer questions about the information that I, I found, if there's a specific area that tribal council wants me to address as it relates to the memo. I'm happy to enter, answer any questions that I might be able to.
You guys want to start? That's where, for enrollments, one of the moments. Isn't we get, uh, because band members get the copy of the letter that you. Mentioned them. I don't know if he cared.
Oh, yeah, that's the, that's the letter.
Oh, this is that you sent to her?
Yeah. Um. Guess this is what she wrote then. Number one would be review the number of voters who are less than one fourth, I guess. The number, I guess we can start with number one.
Certainly, yeah, so, uh, with respect to issue number one, uh, I tried to address that question by reaching out to the MCT. And it's my understanding that they do not keep data on who participates in any given election. She did indicate that White Earth may maintain a registered voter list, but that's not something that her office would have. Um, I also attempted to reach out to, um, Gary Frazier, the, the chair. That was on White Earth's most recent election board and he does not have that information either. So as far as I'm aware, there isn't documentation, uh, that would outline who actually participated in White Earth's elections. Uh, so potential recommendations going forward, uh, White Earth could certainly start maintaining voter registration, this could be beneficial for inquiries like this. But also to, uh, gauge level of voter participation, uh, for future get out the vote efforts and, and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it just seems kind of weird that they don't have the information, uh, on who all voted, when that's what we have to provide when we vote. And then they have the numbers of, you know, they have the number of how many voters we have, so I think they do have that information. Because you just have to check how many people checked in to vote, you know what I mean, and then match it up with the, how many people casted their vote.
I mean, Representative Summers, I, I can tell you that I reached out to the executive director's office and they told me that they don't have that information and I reached out to the former, uh, election chair and they also indicated they don't have that information. So that's the, that's what I was relayed to me, but if you want to make subsequent inquiries, you certainly are welcome to.
Yeah, Secretary La Rock, how do, how could we get a hold of those numbers or?
There's, there's two questions here. There's two questions about voter registration and there's another question about. Blood quantum. So I'd have to take a look in to see if blood quantum for all these people that voted is public information. For one. We, I, I, I'd have to look into that first. Because not everybody's blood quantum is public information, that's their business. So for us to ask, how many people under a quarter voted in our election? You'd be asking for protected information, in my opinion only, that's my opinion, I'll have to research it and take a look at it. That's my answer.
Well, there's folks that are, don't beat the twenty-five percent blood problem, there's fifty-two percent of the tribe. That doesn't meet the twenty-five percent blood quantum and it's just, it's real scary that. You know, they don't meet that blood quantum and they're able to vote and everything and while like all of our kids and our grandkids, they don't meet that twenty-five percent and they don't get the, you know, they don't get the same, uh. They don't, they don't get treated the same as these other folks.
As I got, uh, two questions. Um. Member, members are able to, to speak on this, right, it's an open meeting?
No, no, it's a special.
A special meeting, but it's an open meeting for tribal, tribal members.
We're talking about his code.
Right, and that's what this question is about, chairman, I'm a band member, am I able to speak at our open tribal council meeting? That's article thirteen, right, freedom of speech. Economic resources.
Your question, Andy.
I, am I able to speak, are you, but what are you censoring me right now to not speak?
Ask you, what's your question?
Okay, my question is about the enrollments, you know. Eugene, did you request a, a letter to the council as a whole? Because from my understanding, the council as a whole has to allow you, uh, get information from our. Is that correct? I think that's what was stated at the.
Yeah, they, uh, there's a different interpretation, I sixty-five now, so I have to ask these guys for permission to get any kind of tribal data, I guess.
Did you, did you request?
Yeah.
Data from them?
I requested data from Mike La Rock, a lot of times, I don't know how many requests, maybe six.
Okay, and Mike La Rock, what was your response to him requesting data for enrollments on the blood quantum?
But I just told you.
I mean, specifically, he's asked.
No, you didn't.
That's all, no, you, you never said yes or no, if you allowed Eugene to get the information from our enrollments or not. Did you allow him to get the information or is it a council as a whole that has to vote on?
Council as a whole.
Okay, was it on the agenda at all?
That's an interpretation, we're to make the contract.
I hear a whole lot of thoughts, I thought, I thought, I hear a whole lot of that, you guys have any factual information?
Okay, so I mean.
You live in a housing house and you're not supposed to be in there, that's factual.
When it comes, when it comes to article two, nobody. Even us are not privy to your family, your family, your family, your fam. So what gives right to one council member, we have to as council, if we see that there's a discrepancy, then we could take action as a, as a council. That's what, that what you're saying, Andy? Is that, so you want access to everyone's, everyone's data?
Not band members, no, what I'm saying, chairman, is the council has the, the authority to, to gain that access. The con, privately, right? Council as a whole, but Eugene has been requesting it through the council. Um, I guess I don't know if it was on the agenda at all to request it, whether if it was in, uh, executive session or not. But apparently there's some discrepancies with our enrollments, so why can't Eugene access our enrollments? You know, and that's private information.
What I'm saying is that he's.
I mean.
He can't go on an investigation by himself.
But he should have access to, uh.
To your data, to his data?
Any, anything that's in his district. Why should he not have access?
Blood problem?
How is he supposed to?
If we, he could use that to benefit when election is coming up, he goes, looks at everybody's information in his district, he can use that to benefit in the upcoming election also, do you think of that?
Well, I can see the only people that holding any information is, is.
I already, I already have, I already have the enrollment data for White Earth, just said, the whole MCT, it's like, that's where you.
Just saying, guys, if there's discrepancies on twenty-five percent, unless that members are bit that are, that have been enrolled. Considering it right now, the way our constitution is written, it's illegal for them to be enrolled, right? If they're under twenty-five percent and they're enrolled. So that's, that's.
You gotta remember, article two is under what, guys? What's article, article?
Yeah, the first amendment that they put on that constitution, but.
You have to take this to the MCT, this, this ain't at this table.
Yeah, but you guys sit on the MCT, that's the president right there.
Not my role today, though.
Not today, okay.
Not today.
Well, you know what, I, I think, I think, I think this council, the people, does it not, does this council not represent?
So I think Representative Summers having a legal opinion, look into that for us, I mean, I, I don't feel.
Man, I'm tired of these legal opinions, it's wrong.
Yeah.
Let's look into it. It's wrong.
We have to understand the constitution, what happened.
Understand the constitution.
So that, that happened before our time and it, they allowed it.
No, but it's obviously wrong, it's obviously wrong, look, it's like somebody's setting us up. There's fraud going on there and there's fifty-two percent of the tribe is under twenty-five percent, that's crazy.
And that was before our time, so we have to, how do you?
I know, we're here now, though, we got to fix it, we're gonna fix it.
Oh.
What's your fix? Bring us a solution.
Investigation, like we've been saying from the beginning, you guys don't want to do an investigation, because you guys are in on it.
Investigation, how, like, an outside person do the investigation or what are you proposing?
You guys already know, you guys are just acting, acting, you don't know anything.
Here, don't give me the runaround right now.
I give you the runaround, okay, your emails. Do an investigation.
Okay, Eugene, what's your proposal for the investigation?
Alright, point of order, guys, alright, guys.
Let me, I like to say one thing, I like to say one thing first here before.
It's about the letter, let him. He's an elder, let him.
Okay.
Point of order.
I'm gonna tell you, um. If any of you like to go to the library or order this book. It's called The Tragedy at White Earth by Melissa Myers. Go to page one hundred and eighty. All the chiefs, including my grandfather, Pindike Gishak, that did not have a name. English name. And I'm sorry to say, Mr. Chairman. Your name, along with the Roy's. Ballers. A boy, or, and a few others, were disenrolled. Your family was disenrolled. I mean, look that up in that page, all the chief that had them disenrolled, my question is, how did they get back enrolled? Read that book, you will see the fraud that they talked about that continues today with this enrollment. And I'm not talking bullshit here, I'm talking facts. You must understand that, Mr. Chairman. It's been going on that long, disenrollment. It's a. I suppose they're shutting it off on YouTube or whatever it is, but let me tell you, it's wrong. We, we have to re. Fix this, there's too many of our people that's on that that shouldn't be on there. By God. It's, and, and one other thing, if this home on South Twin goes up for auction. A lottery. Nobody making more than seventy thousand dollars a year should be able to bid on that home because of the fact of the matters. We got millionaires on this and it, it wouldn't be fair to the other people because they can just go like that and get that house. There's got to be a limit of what people make. Am I right or am I wrong that the welfare? The, the millionaires can get this house with no problem. Are very wealthy.
Alright, well, thank you.
Alright, what's the next question? Well, I guess, are we gonna start an investigation on enrollments then, and then we could probably just start with the fake tribal IDs, where, where those came from, you know what I mean? I, I literally met a man at the Shooting Star Casino that had a tribal ID. Had a whole, the tribal police who did a report on it, they said that he was disenrolled in two thousand and nineteen, but then he was issued an ID in like twenty twenty, so like, there's definitely some discrepancies going on. Land office, they got a bunch of people subleasing, I know who these people are. It's like, what are we gonna have to do, are we gonna have to go to these lake lots this summer and just like start reporting them and just show up to their house and say, look at your subleasing, get out of here, you're trespassing? Are we gonna have to do that, or are you guys actually gonna do something about this, this mess in the land office?
So executive director, can you speak to the issues how they're fixing that in the land office, please?
So, um, if we had gone through all of the questions, I think we would get to that solution, but we've only made it to number two. Is my understanding, but, um, short answer is that we'd have compliance officers in all three districts that would be going out doing the assessments, um, during the spring and summer months. And then, um, in the winter time, they would be doing the paperwork and sending out notices and bringing up compliance, updating records. Um, and it would be beneficial if we had three full-time positions to address those specific areas and then that way, everybody would be. You know, where they need to be complying with. With the rules.
All these people living, not appoint them?
Right.
They're, they would be hired full-time employees.
Asking and not appoint them?
Really wise, yeah.
Should we not hire them, can we, can we point them, appoint them? That way that gives.
Not, not the way the, not the way the current structure is, no.
Would you change the current structure to allow these people to be voted in by the membership?
Well, the, well, the thing is, if it's, they're paid employees to work for the government to address this, and then the other thing is, we'd have to think about privacy and confidentiality too, so.
And qualifications and make sure they understand the process, the lease, the lease codes, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that go into this.
I mean, I think we're just worried, we're not worried about the folks that are, you know, the, the, the enrolled members that are holding these leases and maybe they didn't make a lease payment, we're, we're worried about the guys that are. Subleasing to, to non-natives that come here and use our land and, you know, that aren't even living there, they're just subleasing. I know there's a lot of that going on in the land office and what's gonna go, like, who's gonna be held accountable for that, so like, the people that are subleasing these lots, what's gonna happen to them, are they gonna be eligible to continue to get tribal lots and tribal land to sell?
Oh, no, there's no transparency.
So if, if, I mean, is that something we need to look at and if that, they violate that, we should put that in their, in the, do we put that in the code so they're not eligible? I, I mean, that's just a question, that's something.
If I may, sir.
Yes, please.
So there, there are some rules that would be going into place that'll be updated, so when you enter into a lease, you would understand your agreement. For example, if you rented a lot, or leased a lot and then you left a bunch of garbage there. And, um, got behind in your, in your, uh, lease payments, then there would be corrective action, you may lose that property and you would not be eligible to apply for another property. Until that payment is paid in full to clean that lot up, that's just one example, and then that would repeat on, you know, if they're subleasing or things of that nature, then. That would be in violation therefore making them ineligible for any future leases.
Yeah. I was, you know, I think those, those people who are checking these leases should be voted in by the membership, not appointed by council, not employed by council.
Yep. Well, they're, yeah, they're, just for clarification, when we have open positions, then everybody comes in, they apply, um, they have an interview, they have qualifications. Um, and then it's decided upon the hiring team. But it's not appointed by tribal leaders.
No, that's what I was wondering, for the membership, I think the membership would like these roles to be voted in. So that you guys are, nobody's hiring these people because we don't know what the hiring board is. We don't know who's on the hiring board for these positions. If we put out a vote for the membership to vote, who's gonna be assessing these properties and going through over all these lists and things like that, that should be voted in by the membership. So the membership feels the transparency, so they don't feel like this, hired by you guys or appointed by you guys or anything.
I want to make something very clear, or in a good way. You, you know, oftentimes I hear about, we want our members to be in these positions, right? And we want them to be employed or, or appointed or whatever.
Yeah.
But oftentimes, folks forget. I am a member.
No, no, I know, no, no.
I have several members.
No, no, I know.
For the tribe.
I'm trying to discredit anything you're saying. Probably discredit anything you're saying. What I'm trying to say is for full transparency and for full comparability. It would be nice to have those positions who are assessing the current land issues to be voted in by the membership. I would be something that maybe you guys should think about internally.
Be watch.
And so I guess number three, then increase in lease transfer.
Oh, I, I don't know that we actually addressed number two.
Okay.
I didn't have an opportunity to, to address number two. Um, so just pulling it up here. So numbers, numbers.
Sorry, good enough, uh, bad members, we, we never got that paper, so I don't even know what's going on. I'm sure the rest of us don't know what's going on with that, with the numbers and the questions on there. Alls we got is just the letter of concern. And if it's public, you know, I think we should. Well, it's a public meeting. Excuse me, then go ahead. Sorry, Ashley.
That's alright, thanks. Um, so the, the second issue that I identified in Representative Summers. Uh, letter of concern was to address any discrepancies in the corrections made for blood quantum. And put in quality assurances to protect the process going forward. So I had an opportunity to meet with the head of enrollments for White Earth. And I was informed that White Earth has been corrected for blood quantum and other issues several times since the BIA and tribal operations. And then again, when the MCT took tribal operations from the BIA between nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-five. And then White Earth took on its, its own enrollments in nineteen ninety-five and have been updating blood quantum from the T E. From a T E C resolution that passed in October of twenty nineteen to return original allottees back to full blood. Uh, from night, from eighteen ninety to nineteen oh one, and that there have been blood quantum corrections to the nineteen forty-one base rule. And then I had a chance to discuss with uh, enrollments issues related to the enrollment process. It's my understanding that prior to twenty fifteen, there wasn't a formalized standard operating procedure or policy. That uh, the enrollment office followed. Uh, and that if someone is now seeking enrollment, they have to provide their birth certificate. Or if applicable, adoption order or original birth certificate. And that um, there is a review process for enrollments and that that gets sent off to the MCT for review. But prior to twenty fifteen, it's my understanding that there wasn't a records management system. Uh, and that oftentimes um, documentation wasn't maintained. And that prior to two thousand eight, everything was on index cards. And that enrollments is doing everything they can to uh, consistently uh, clean up records. Maintain records correctly. Uh, I asked about the, the feasibility of doing a, a yearly audit. And it's my understanding that that would be difficult, costly and time-consuming because of the lack of centralized and quality records. Noting that record span between the, the BIA, um, having White Earth's original allotment records. It's my understanding that White Earth sent a letter to the Department of Interior asking for those archival records. And uh, we recently received a response back indicating that that would fall under a FOIA. Or the Freedom of Information Act, and that we would have to follow that process to get those original records. It's also my understanding that um, documentation requirements to show eligibility for enrollment have changed over time. That in the past, folks could simply provide like a baptismal certificate or an affidavit of parentage. And um, in those situations, there have been issues, for instance, like a stepparent submitting an affidavit that they're not biologically related to. So um, recommendations going forward could be that enrollments create a written standard operating procedure. And try to engage in regular auditing against those standards for all new enrollees. And have someone dedicated to reviewing past enrollments to ensure there's no discrepancies in our system. And have a formalized record retention policy and attempt that, that FOIA process as well to try to get White Earth's original records. So those are my findings. Pardon?
There's a lot of words.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Are there questions or is there something I can clarify?
Yeah, the, the original allotment records, you can just find them over at the U of M Crooks and they got them publicly. Uh, it's weird, it's, it's protected information. So like, I'm assuming everything coming from the BIA is gonna be protected information, even if it's public information elsewhere. I think it's just their standard process.
And Representative Summers, I wasn't aware of that documentation at the U of M being publicly available, so I can't speak to that.
Well, you just move on to number three, so the in- increase in lease transfers.
Sure, but before I do, does anybody else have questions about that?
I do. See, you're telling me that it's uh, it's, it's costly. What were you, what were you worded to use? You said it's, it costs too much. We're in the twenty-first century, data, email, you know, anything nowadays, I, I, I don't really, I'm not following along. Where you say it's too costly, expensive to exchange homes. Don't we have that information public to our tribe? Don't we have all this information?
We have the brainpower internally of the tribe to build something. Stop reaching out to third-party services. We should be taking data sovereignty seriously. Data, we've taken our data, where our data is going. I myself and.
Are you the interpreter? I said, all right, what, what is your role? I, I, I just don't know what, what you do.
She's a tribal attorney.
Oh, she's an attorney?
Yes.
Yeah, Representative Summers raised some issues, so I'm, I'm trying to find answers for, for the sake of transparency. So I'm just sharing the information that, that I learned.
Good. Alright, Ashley, I think we can go on to number three then.
Okay, sure. So going on to number three, um, the issue that. Um, I identified based on the letter of concern was an increase in land transfers uh, when um. Alleged fraud was discovered on South Twin Lake and is it indicative of additional fraud? And I had an, an opportunity to, to speak with the, the land office. And it's my understanding that there have been no lakeshore lease transfers since that South Twin Lake issue. And that other additional transfers were due to compliance issues. And that was outlined in a memo that was uh, provided to the Executive Director's office. And it's also my understanding that land continues to work on compliance as Executive Director York noted. Um, you know, doing, doing checks, additional staffing would, would help um, aid that uh. Compliance check process uh, going forward in a more expedient manner, but it's my understanding that those efforts are ongoing.
Yeah.
Uh, can I, I got a question, um. What if a member, a rolled member, has a home and he passes away? But his kids, children are not enrolled. How, how does that, uh, what's the process after that? I mean, this is a, a question that's very important because it's happening. What's gonna come of the people from their parents' home, the ones that are enrolled? What's the process? Is the process to remove them or let them continue living there? I mean, I, I like to have an answer right now. I mean, the, you know.
Well, what just happened on South Twin is they got removed cuz they weren't enrolled members.
Well, there's a few, there's a few others too, you know, but it's a very, this is very important here, uh, to get this straightened out here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's where our compliance division, the enrollments never, are not enrolled, my land office never had an appliance off, a compliance officer. We're looking at adding three, one for each district, to be able to look into this, what you're talking about. And when people pass away and then their, their children or their grandchildren are living on there that are not enrolled. That's what compliance is gonna find out and deal with per policy.
I'd also add that it depends, if the children are minors, that's a different situation. And the MCT constitution and land ordinance three, but if the children are adults, they should not be there.
What, what, what do you mean by minors?
Children.
But if they're under, they're, they're still allowed to live there.
So. If they're not enrolled, and the, like, if you have a situation where you have a member married to a non-member and the children are not enrolled. And the member dies, and you have a family there with young children, it's a different situation. RBC will look at that situation and they may be allowed to stay until the kids get to be eighteen, maybe.
That could be ten, fifteen years down the line, you know.
Definition for that, it's called, uh, what is it called? Because they do it in a state, and they do it all over the place.
Not really a life estate.
It's almost like a life estate. It's almost like that.
So again, that's coming from MCT. Like, that process is outlined. For the, for the kids who are adults. Yeah, they shouldn't be there because they're not members.
But I, I agree with uh, La Rock here, that we should have people or some type of structure to look into that.
We, and we do. We're look, we, we do have one person hired right now, and we're in it, currently gonna hire two more compliance officers.
Hey, I'm, I'm volunteering for that. Hire, hire me.
What you happen?
Yeah, I think all that land, all that land, all the land, we know it should be public information for the membership. Because I requested uh, all the land leases from the land office, they weren't able to produce it. So like, I don't understand why I can't have that information.
I feel the same as a bad member too. That should be public information or land base.
What prevented it from be becoming public information?
It's a policy. Like, I got an app on my phone right now that could tell me what all tribal land is, but. I mean. Yeah, it tells you all states.
Yeah, cuz you can run any GS map in each county and look at and see what's tribal land and what's not.
Yeah.
You wanna know the owners of it.
Yeah. But it prevented it from becoming public information, Mike.
I haven't.
Now, is there, um, the compliance officers, are they gonna have qualifications like schooling or whatever to go?
Yes.
Or you mean like trained?
Train, not only the training, but I mean, if they have a class in a college course and stuff like that. Not just, like, if I wanted to come in.
Yeah.
You know, and say, okay, yeah. You know, I don't have any training, any nothing, any college, nothing.
I assume that there's a job description already put together for the one, one that currently is hired.
Job called, what's the job title?
I believe it's uh, compliance, our land, land compliance. I'll have to double check in the compliance office, compliance officer, yeah.
Eugene, do you have any idea what prevented it from being public information?
Um, yeah, cuz there's a lot of land lease fraud. I mean, that's, that, that goes on forever in White Earth, all kinds of land lease fraud. I mean, that's the, that's the short answer, and that's what was already going on. That's what triggered this whole investigation, land lease fraud. And what I wanna know is why the Menominee County Deputy is in charge. And I think Mike La Rock knows why.
That was given to our legal department. That's.
I know, it's your job, though. It's your job.
But we talked, we talked as a whole, Chairman.
I have a quick question, Representative Summers. How many times, since you've been in office, how many land lease frauds have you, have you encountered?
Looking into the information, how's he supposed to even know?
Let him answer the question.
How many other cases?
Block him on every kind of information.
Let him answer the question.
Okay, so it was the, it was the first one with the deputy.
Yeah.
And then the one right next to it, I guess that one was, uh, was fraudulent too.
Yeah.
And then we getting all these uh, all these other complaints coming about fraudulent. I know of uh, of uh, of people on Snyder Lake that uh, that are non-native that go there and they sublease from people.
Did you turn it into the land office?
Yeah, turned it into the land office.
They haven't did anything?
Yeah, because their cousins are doing it.
How long ago did you turn it in?
As soon as all this other stuff came out, we, we brought it all up.
Did you CC Laurie on it?
I CC, I don't know. I, I gave you a letter of concern. That's what we're discussing now. Don't try to like.
I just didn't, I wanted to know exact, I mean, cuz, you know, the, when I came on council, the Menominee one was one of the first ones we discussed. And we went back and forth and on it, and then I think Legal told us that there wasn't, they didn't think they could prosecute. I could be wrong. I'd have to go look at my notes again, but, I mean, I don't, I think the process is, we just send it to the county with all the information.
Send it to the county, the county that, the officer that, he worked for the county.
Yeah, well, they would have to conflict that county out usually and send it to a different county, but I mean, that.
Yeah, it's my recollection that it was discussed. Cuz fraud, as Ashley alluded to, is a legal term. So you have to prove that in the court of law and have enough evidence that that was intentional. And I'm not, Ashley can feel free to jump in, but the council had discussed that option and favored instead for, for an alternative. Which I think at that time was kicking him out and then taking control of the property.
I thought we did, so, I don't, I got a misunderstanding of the whole situation now then, because I thought what we had to do is kick him out cuz he was breaking the law. But can we still charge him or no? So you're saying that we, since we kicked him out, that was the action? Yeah, I wanna charge him. I want him charged.
I think the question is if there's enough evidence to prove it in a court of law. So that, that's where we'd have to get, maybe we need to have another meeting and get in the nitty-gritty details of what information we have. And whether or not that's sufficient to prove.
I don't know, it seems pretty cut and dry. I mean, he was, he had somebody in the land office that was signing off on a lease of a dead person. I mean.
It was with all that employee, why isn't that employee being reprimanded?
Which employee?
Can't, no, no, we can't talk about it.
Is that defines fraud?
Legally fraud.
Is that fraud though?
So do you want Legal to follow up on that, Eugene? To, um.
Well, you see, it's not my job. It's the Secretary Treasurer's job to safeguard all of our property. So the, the fact that I even had to go out there and walk out to that, that lake lot and like knock on the door and do all that. Because from, from what I remember, it said that we couldn't remove him from the house. And I, I thought that was just straight up BS cuz I was like, he's obviously, he's not a tribal member and you're just gonna let him live out in this, our tribal land? Doesn't have a lease, I don't know, it's just weird.
What I recalled is the discussion about, do we remove him that day? Do we give him time? And we made a decision and then we, he was removed, but that's my recollection of the conversation.
For clarity, they've been removing, clearly, they're at the point of removal and they removed him, that's important.
He was there for how many, uh, what, a decade, you said, Eugene?
Yeah, but was he there?
I'm gonna answer the question, let's move on, I guess.
I was inviting you guys to bring charges against him.
And just a point of clarification, individuals don't bring charges, prosecutors do for criminal court. So if you referred the case to law enforcement, a prosecutor would have to review that case. And determine that there was sufficient evidence and they're the ones who decide whether or not to charge. You all can decide whether or not to refer the case for charges, but that's a common misconception. Individual people don't bring criminal charges.
Is this for county court or do we bring them to tribal court? Tribal court had our tribal officers on the answer.
Wouldn't that be a federal offense, though? Trespassing, and that's what it says on our signs, you know what I mean? It's a federal offense.
Even if it was a federal offense, Representative Summers, it would still be a federal prosecutor that made that determination.
Why?
Is it gonna be sent to a federal?
Yeah, so we got, we got tribal members that want this individual charged. They, they don't want, they don't want this going on on their land anymore. That's, that's like the whole thing, like, it's like.
We need to make examples of all these people that are doing these things on our land. Scare, point-blank simple, so they ain't gonna come and do, we gotta safeguard, protect what, what's, what we all did, uh, simple as that. We're just allowing these people to come in here and do this time after time after time, do it the same, we're dealing with it yet again. I know there's, there's powers that are reserved, just the people, right?
Yeah.
And I know that, because tyrants, you guys are silencing the people. You guys are looking at the tools that you guys are putting on these people with the social media policy. You're trying to silence people. Okay, you got a bunch of people silenced. Down, down, now you think, well, when you walk down.
Whatever the, whatever the outcome is of it, can, can the council, can you guys send, can you guys request Legal to send that to the county attorney? Through Menominee County?
Let's get into it.
So I, I would ask that Legal look at and give us the recommendations or make sure, gather everything up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
When this first came up, we all sat down as a tribal council at a executive session and talked about it. And what Ashley said, and what Dre said, they both said that we came to a, we came to an agreement that we were gonna kick him off. And, and we get left it up to you, uh, Representative Summers. We left it up to him, what we wanted to do with this thing because it's his district. He said, kick him off. We wanted to give him ten days to get their stuff out there. He said, no, get them out there right now. We, we, we came to a happy medium on this whole thing, as far as that's concerned. As far as kicking him off and taking the property, which, whatever it's worth or whatever, like, putting it up for auction or whatever we're gonna do with it. At that point in time, there was a, there was a recommendation coming from Legal. That said that they, we have to follow this, this and this as far as intent for charges to go to do this. At that point in time, there never was a decision made that we wanted to charge these individuals. If Representative Summers wants, as his district representative, wants us to, and I'm gonna back up, not charge them. Refer the investigation to the proper authorities to be charged. If Representative Summers wants to do that today, let's, if he wants to do it, we can sure accompany that and say that. To say that we just ignored it, that's a lie. That's, that's a lie. We did not ignore it. That's a lie. Uh, if he wants that, that's his district, he could've came forward at any time and told us at any meeting. And told us that he wanted charges filed against them. That's no.
Did. And don't, don't leave out the part where you said you wanted to bid on the property too. And don't, don't leave out the part where you said you wanted a bid on the property too, it's, don't forget that part, La Rock, don't forget that one.
Anyways, if he, if he wants to, he can, he can, he can consensus the tribal council and we'll say, okay, we're going to. Continue this investigation to submit paperwork for charges, that's, if he wants that, Chairman?
Yeah, that's what I want, that's what I've been telling you.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Are you gonna vote on it?
I could in quarter three.
How could you vote on it? For the tribal member, you can vote on it. As a tribal, I'm asking you a question, as a tri- as a tribal member, can you, John, I'm not talking, whoever your name is, all right, Anthony and I'm. Hunter, can you vote on it, Hunter? Can you vote, as a tribal member?
Hey, Mike La Rock, Mike La Rock, you know, he has a higher blood quantum than some of the people enrolled in our tribe right now, that's why, that's what we've got to. Cause he doesn't have a voice.
No, you should be done.
Point order, what's the next one?
Here's the next question, Chairman, did you guys swear, put your hand up to uphold and proclaim the rights of constitution of the whole men?
What's the next one?
Next one. Did you, the next one?
Can you please put a question for?
The members' rights.
If not, you guys can resign. Let's go next, and avoid charge.
All right, go ahead, what's number four?
Thank, thank you, Mister Chairman, uh so number four was uh a an issue with alleged fraudulent tribal IDs being issued. I personally was not able to find evidence of uh fraudulent tribal IDs being issued. That being said, I was able to ascertain that there wasn't sufficient communication between Public Safety who was issuing the IDs. And the enrollment offices, which may have resulted in some tribal IDs being issued inappropriate, inappropriately. Uh, so at the beginning of February, uh enrollments and Public Safety came together. Uh, enrollments was able to provide a list of individuals who had been disenrolled uh from White Earth according to the MCT. And then Public Safety was able to conduct an audit of their database and the results were were documented into a a memo that was. Uh, shared with the Executive Director's Office, recommend, recommendations going forward would be uh that between. Uh, the legal department, the enrollments office and Public Safety, we have submitted a a draft policy for consideration. To try to prevent issues like this moving forward, the draft policy would require upon receipt of an enrollment change notification. That the DMV would collect and invalidate a former member's tribal ID in the presence of two DMV personnel. Additional additionally, uh recommending potentially a government-wide intranet where appropriate and authorized personnel. Could easily access things like enrollment status could help going forward. And it could also be useful for other things too, like standardized government forms, data retention and the like.
So you guys didn't find any fraudulent IDs, you said, or what?
So again, fraud is a legal standard, what I was able to establish is that. There was a a lack of appropriate communication between, between Public Safety and the enrollments office. And I've since uh in conjunction with Public Safety and Enrollment submitted a draft policy. That would formalize a process to make sure that that uh communication happens going forward, so there aren't issues like this in the future.
Okay, so Ashley, was there tribal IDs issued to people that were not enrolled in White Earth?
A different question that's for asking Ron in the memo, Representative Summers.
Okay, well, yeah, there was, there was that that Frank Boyd, Frank Joseph Boyd and his enrollment number is four oh eight C oh five oh six one five. But like that was, he was not enrolled, he, I couldn't find him in the enrollment book, he uh couldn't find any enrollment data on him at all. And he had an enrollment number, got it issued to him. Uh, I would, I would say that 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 individual received a tribal ID and he was not a tribal member and he was accessing uh. He's accessing uh elder services at our casino for a long time.
And again, through proper communication through the enrollments office and Public Safety, hopefully issues like that would not continue going forward.
So yes, there was, there was individuals that were given tribal IDs that were not enrolled in the tribe.
I was not asked to analyze the, I think you said Frank Boyd situation.
Asked that there was fraud.
Mike, Missy's got a question here. Missy, you's got a question here?
Yes, Miss, sorry.
Where, where do you find the rules or regulations for disenrollment, where are they found in? Are they different for each tribe or are they just MCT rules?
Should be MCT, cause that's the only thing we do together is enrollments and elections.
So where, where would you find?
Uh, it'd be on the MCT, it'd probably be constitutional uh interpretation, I don't know, or also be an ordinance, probably a disenrollment ordinance. You can ask Mike La Rock, he's the president, he should know.
And and just to to piggyback off of that, this would also apply if somebody makes a a ban transfer, the draft policy does. Because there's other instances where somebody may no longer be in White Earth, but they might not need to have a White Earth tribal ID anymore. Because they've done a a ban transfer or something of of that nature, so the draft policy does also cover that as well.
Missy, this spelled out and I, I'll 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 get it to you, it spelled out the criteria for disenrollment.
You need the meeting minutes too for the MCT? The last meeting? Okay, what's the next one? Number five, uh, did a non-enrolled member receive a thirty thousand dollars in tribal funds?
Right, so it's my understanding that uh. Uh, and an individual who purported to be uh enrolled did make a small business application. And did receive thirty thousand dollars in funding because they submitted their application with a tribal ID. Uh, it's my understanding that initially, uh. Those applications were were being reviewed uh elsewhere but got transferred to review by enterprises. And the enterprises team did not independently verify the status of applicants with the enrollment office. So again, um, my recommendation would be potentially an intranet going forward where authorized personnel could easily access enrollment information. That potentially could have prevented this if while reviewing applications, all the enterprises team had to do was look up that information. Um, this, this could have been avoided, but again, it comes down to um various entities or departments not communicating with respect to enrollments. And just relying on tribal IDs, so I think both the the draft policy being implemented as well as good communication going forward can prevent these issues.
Okay, so a non-enrolled member did receive thirty thousand dollars in tribal funds and then they're 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 all, there are issues of non-enrolled members getting tribal IDs, okay?
I have a question, what is gonna happen to the member that got the thirty grand, is he gonna get it back to the tribe or you guys, just gonna let him get away with it?
What he just said?
What I asked?
Yep, what you asked, I just told Chairman, I said that, no, I said that's a decision that just tribal council will make.
I feel like you guys should make an example.
How until they send that information to work with Legal and send that information to the county, ever that happened? Uh, cause that is fraud, using a fake ID and then getting thirty thousand dollars, that stealing from our members.
That should be going federally, that's that's a tribal fund.
What do you guys say about that, Mike, answer to that?
I answered the question. What, what's the tribal fund, it's a tribal council's decision, this isn't me, this isn't me to answer that, this is the chairman's.
I heard that, so what's gonna happen, so you guys can give out a public notice saying what you guys had come to a decision? I appreciate that. All we've been asking for, outside looking in, people think this tribe is a joke, look at this.
Mister Chairman, that happened with the, the the past council, correct?
Why, it's a fraud ID though, I mean. Just one last thing, could could members get a thirty day or sixty day notice follow up on this, so that it's not just left drifting?
Why if I make the decision the same day?
He wants number of individuals enrolled, the number of individuals enrolled, the list of people who have been disenrolled. Number six.
Oh, it's number six, Ashley.
Sure, uh, the the sixth issue I was able to identify in the letter of concern was. Um, a desire to know the number of individuals enrolled after the nineteen sixty-one annuity. Annuity rule and a list of people who've been disenrolled along with why, and it's my understanding after speaking with enrollments, this information. Uh, would have to be achieved through a data request to the MCT with the approval of of Secretary Treasurer La Rock. If there are no questions on that, I can jump right into the the next one.
Well, Secretary La Rock, would you be willing to do that then or what, to get that information for us?
Uh, the MCT data request is online, that's what she's saying.
I know, but I mean.
You you have to put a data request in, that's it.
I mean, you're the president, so like, what's?
I know, I just answered it.
Civil process.
There, I just told you what it is.
How long would it take then, cause I requested a while ago? I'm pretty sure it was one of the original data requests I sent to you.
Did you request it through?
You, you got the email, you said received.
What do, what do you, there you, a lot of emails, what are you talking about? Tell me what you're talking about. You you want, you you want yourself to MCT and put a data request in for every enrolled member under eighteen, you got that out from MCT, correct?
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, so that's where, that's what.
Meetings, I wanna play MCT, I didn't get those yet.
Let me finish, that's the same data request he's talking about here. It doesn't come to me, I approve it, it comes to our executive director at the MCT.
So I could just get all the, so but but we're asking, we're asking for the, for the individuals enrolled after the nineteen sixty-one annuity rule. What was the, what was the base membership rule, and then after the nineteen sixty-one annuity rule, how much did it jump up, that's what we're asking. And we can't ask that on that data form, that's why I'm asking you, because you're the president.
Like I said earlier, enrollment information is protected.
My God.
It is, you don't think it is?
Who protects it, Mike?
By whatever the.
Rubber stamps it, just like the state's gonna do with our compact.
My question to you, Representative Summers, where are you going with this?
I wanna know the origin.
No, where, I didn't ask you, you already asked that already, where are you going with this, are you wanna disenroll everybody that's not a quarter?
No, now, now you're putting words into my mouth, that's what you're gonna do. All right.
Yes, I'm answering.
I wanna fix our roles. Well, if you look back, I mean, if you look back at some of your family, I guess you can see like.
That's what they do in my family, my family's all enrolled. They're all over.
Point order.
Uh, Mister Fox, Mister Fox, what do you get paid for just saying I second it, you look, you sit there.
We have uh in our treaty, there's a reserve power for the people. Is there a reserve power for the people that they can exercise the power to get anybody on the council removed? Is there a reserve power, yes or no, can I get that answered for that question?
You're saying reserve power from the membership?
They they're prepared for things like this, when, you know, tyrants and people like you trying to. There should be a power. Cause you know what, you know what I've been getting, I've been getting a lot of comments from a lot of our elders, a lot of our people.
All right, let's go, what's number seven? Or what's number six? You're good with that? Well, no, there's a nu- number seven, how did the, that's protected, that one. Well, they can, they can sum it up, how did the uh non-enrolled member situation come to be, I don't know, it's on here though.
So, so it's my understanding that there was um. A, a non-enrolled member and an enrolled member, uh. That. A non-enrolled member that indicated he had a tribal ID since he was a child and there was an enrolled member that. They were born in the same hospital, had the same social security number, same birth date, and he was able to um. Inappropriately receive a a tribal ID.
Can I add to that, Chairman?
Yes, please.
That, that enrolled member with the fix had the blood quantity to be enrolled, I did, and that's how we fixed it.
He's not enrolled.
He's gonna get enrolled.
I doubt.
He's gonna get enrolled.
He's gonna, but so right now, he's not.
He's not right now.
So he's not.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying.
You're gonna enroll him to fix it, huh?
My God. Get enrolled.
Well, so does, so does Hunter, but you said he's not. He doesn't, yeah, he does, give him quarter three, he'll have to sign off on it.
He was born before sixty-one.
And again, this, this circles back to that that draft policy, uh previously, it's my understanding, it wasn't the practice of. The DMV to check enrollment status, uh so, so that could have been the issue with respect to the the tribal ID. So for recommendations going forward, again, that new proposed policy between the enrollments office and the DMV will hopefully solve this. Again, along with regular auditing of the DMV system to make sure that the policy is being followed as recommended. And again, potentially a government-wide intranet, um if a DB, DMV manager could simply look up an applicant in their system. Uh, the verif- verification process could be more efficient and hopefully mitigate circumstances where and then call, where a call to the enrollments office. Uh, may get overlooked, so that's that issue, um if there are no questions about that, I know there was also um. It wasn't in the letters of concern, but I know Representative Summers has previously voiced some concern about a a voting device. And I'm, I'm happy to try to address that as well.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good on, yeah, it was that, it was that um automated election services uh. Uh, like, it said absentee ballots, uh election hard drive on it, and they found that at the Shooting Star Casino, so yeah, what what's up with that?
Sure, so I had an opportunity to uh look at that device in conjunction with Public Safety IT. Public Safety IT does not currently have the equipment necessary to access that device. They indicated that they could attempt to get that equipment, but there are some potential concerns with going that route. One of which is that there's a high likelihood that the information on that device is password protected. And that after a certain number of fails, that that data could be deleted. Additionally, there's concern, even if Public Safety of its own accord did get the equipment to access the data. There's a high likelihood that it would be encrypted and not able to be viewed in a way that makes sense without the manufacturer's. Uh, software to to read it, so an option could be sending that device back to the manufacturer and asking them to send us that data. Unencrypted, uh but a- as it stands at this point, we do not have the equipment necessary to access that device.
Why, why were the, why were the hard drives there, because it it's come from the election, uh from the people that do our elections?
I'd like to add to that, when I worked at the Shooting Star Casino, Teddy Buzzy had a stack of them in his office at any given time. As employees, we used to look at them and laugh at them.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
There's not any proof of what was even on those devices right now, so there's not any proof, what was on them, do you know what was on them?
Why is our election services like just leaving hard drives?
Your hard drive, you know what was on them? Okay, so there was, there was not, and they're telling us that you need a special thing to get, get the the. Which not everybody has.
Oh, yeah.
That, you gonna ask Gary Fraser again or is, cause he's the one that sent it out?
Sending that back to the election company.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're sending it back to the election company, why?
It's their property.
Really?
Wouldn't it be nice to get the info off of it before it's sent back to?
Their buddies with me, they won't.
We don't have the equipment to do it, they just said.
Then we don't have the IT for it.
They have special equipment for the. They um, the tribe hires a company, my understanding, it's their equipment.
I know, but it's there, there's election.
And then they should send it back.
If there's election fraud, you know, accusations going out there, shouldn't we take that and hire a third party to come in and, you know, get into it, it wouldn't be that hard.
So per the election ordinance, anytime there's a question about election, you have a time period to challenge that, and that should have been done in that time period.
I know, but we just found out about that, like what, a cou- couple of months ago?
And you gotta remember too, that your system failed this last election, everything was.
And you gotta remember too, that your system failed this last election. Everything was hand counted.
I know, that's why we, we didn't give it back to them. We gotta look.
Well, that's something maybe we should talk about next election is if we're gonna RFP it out to another company. I don't know.
Well, we can't pay it out to another company because it'd be MCT then.
Not this last election, but it was the time before. The one from District One supposedly voted down a District Three. And they were told, that she was told, oh, we'll just switch your names and you can go ahead and vote.
Mason, remember in Callaway on the news?
Yeah, that was, one was a different one. This was. Yes. Yes. In that case, how was that? How was it correctly, it was, it was not correctly handled. How will it be?
But Missy, remember there's election, election committee or board. They were the ones that had that. I'm sure with the miniature with that or where there is.
Don't you set up the, or you set up a committee to set up their regulations they have to follow?
No, MCT has regulations across and they're trained. Those election board members are trained on this. But everything that went wrong with that election has been addressed. Nobody, if nobody, if nobody, what Laura Lee said, if nobody actually contests it within that period. It, it's, it's passed.
But it was brought up and then swept under the.
Wrong, but no, but it had to come from another, I, I believe in the ordinance, it says it has to come from one, like a person who was running for office. Who's running for office and feels that this happened here. They would have to make that, make that request. And if they didn't do it, then it's not. But to say that it wasn't addressed, it was addressed.
Yeah. Well, Secretary Lorak, how are you handling the special elections in Boysport and Grant, or in Fond du Lac now?
I'm, I'm, I'm not. I'm the, the, what's his name? They're, they have their own election boards. They have everything there. That's their, that's their reservations and that's where they do their own stuff.
I know, but you know, you must.
I'm not, I'm only, I'm only in charge of our reservation, not the rest of them.
Really? You're not, you're the president.
As MCT I am, but we are actively, I got staff that's actively looking into it. And I'm getting updates on all of the, what's going on at these elections. So I do have updates from them and I, and I, I'm not running them. They're, they're tasked to run their own elections. We just make sure they follow the ordinance and the policy.
So who's a, I don't know, I guess like from the information you know now, what are the safeguards you're gonna put in place? Cause you are the president.
Safeguards for what?
For election fraud.
That's under legislative, ain't it? Which committee is it under?
Safeguards that they're gonna follow the ordinance? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, all the stuff that we're bringing up right now about like these hard drives that be getting missing, the.
One hard drive. You're saying hard drives are missing. There's one. I don't, that's not factual information that he's giving us. He's, he's telling us. Hearsay that there's a whole bunch of them laying around there. That's hearsay. No proof of that. That's hearsay. So anyways, uh. All we have to do is make sure they're following the orders.
Okay, so you're not gonna do anything, uh, like how, how do we get? How do we get rid of, how do we get rid of automated election services and go with a different?
Well, that's each reservation makes that decision.
No, it's the MCT. It's the MCT. That is, MCT has a contract and that's the thing. That's what we do together. Read the constitution. Read the constitution. It says the MCT. It go, it goes enrollments and elections. That's what we do together.
Go into executive session.
Hold on a minute, hold on, man. I got something that I wanna ask.
Honey Vujun named Slime Summers was approached by the, by the, um, petition committee. They were just wanted to let everyone know that official petition has been released for, like Fairbanks and Mike Lorak. Reach off to them. Guys can reach them out on their Facebook page. Motion my mic.
Hold on, man, let him speak.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate everyone coming over. Be grateful for coming, guys.
I wanna know, why does Zach Wilson have anything to do? Maybe the executive director, maybe you can answer me.